Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Happy New Year, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all and call the meeting to order. We just came out of an executive session, so we'll start this meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we have a special guest gonna read the mission statement for us. Thank you, Ahmad.
The vision of Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curricula, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests.
Thank you. Is there anyone in studio or on Zoom with public comment? There's no one in studio and there's no one on Zoom. All right, let's go. We're already on item number seven. Student Advisory Council. Back to you, Ahmad.
Yeah, so just some quick updates from the high school. On Wednesday, January seventeenth, from six to seven P. M., a representative from Roger Williams University will conduct a financial aid presentation on all the basics, including important information regarding the recent updated FAFSA application for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five year. And this will be happening in the Wakefield Morning High School cafeteria. The class of two thousand and twenty-six will also be having a fudruckers fundraiser in Reading on our next early release day, which is tomorrow. This event will last between eleven A. M. and seven P. M. The Wakefield Youth Council also has a meeting tomorrow where, among other topics, financial literacy will be discussed. And midterms have also been canceled at the high school with no other high school matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments, Robyn? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a consent agenda?
I do. I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three school committee meeting as presented. Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Markham?
I will abstain. I wasn't present at it.
So we have unanimous, Mr. Markham abstains, and Mr. Fiskadell is not with us this evening. Thank you. And Christine's also not with us this evening, so the financial items will be presented at our next meeting, which is on January twenty-third. The floor is yours, Dr. Lyons.
Thank you very much. We're gonna start off this evening with the elementary report card update. We've done some editing there, and here to describe it, they're joining us online. We have Val Dreinen, Lindsay Moska, T.J. and Brian Schmidt.
I think it's just Val, T.J. and Brian here. I think Val's in the waiting room. I don't know. I just got a text that she was in the waiting room, so I just wanted to see if she was.
Good evening, Brian. Good evening, T.J. Can you hear us?
Yeah, we hear her.
We're trying to make sure we're bringing Val onto the screen. Hold on for a moment.
Yep, there she is.
There we go.
Hi, Val. Great, thank you. All right, so yes, we're, thank you, Brian, T.J. and Val for coming here tonight. We thought it was just a good point to give an update to the committee on the work that's been done at the elementary level regarding overall monitoring of student progress. We do have elementary report cards set to go home in February, and we've done some work on those report cards, just keeping them up to date and current. We're gonna go over that tonight, as well as our iReady data and our DIBELS data. So we thought in terms of formatting that we would let T.J., Brian, and Val work through the slides and then do general questions at the end, if that works. Okay? Great, so you guys can go ahead and get started.
Awesome. Thank you, Kara. So as you're aware, you have the packet. We are talking today about some adjustments that are made to our report cards and reporting out state standards. As you know, state standards over the last five years have been updated by the state of Massachusetts. And in line with that, we have updated those standards to be reflected on our standards-based report cards, specifically in the areas, you know, the core areas of E.L.A. Science and Math. And as we update these, they're also part of our curriculum review cycle that we've been doing in those core areas as well. In the past, the standards that were reported out on our standards-based report cards reflected mostly power standards as we began to dig into them and update them. We wanted to create a more concise and streamlined process with that. With that, with these updates and working with our classroom teachers, we're gonna be sending a letter home to families, as Kara referenced. And the letter will provide some explanation on these updates, as well as links, active links to Desi's website, where families can access the Family Roadmaps document, which will help provide some explanation around grade level expectations for students and clarify information regarding the state standards. Along with that, and I'm gonna turn it over to Brian, is some of the parent reports that are going home. Similar to the beginning of the year, we have some more reports that will supplement our standards-based report cards.
Okay, so does everyone have these slides printed out so that you can see them? You do, great. All right, so I'll just kind of go through these reports so that you are familiar with what they are. So the first page here is our... Yep, so the first, yeah, that's exactly. Thank you. That's the slide I'm on.
Okay.
The first page here is the math screener, so we do this through iReady. All of our students take this assessment three times a year on a computer. They take the assessment generally in one sitting, depending upon the grade. And it gives us some really nice data that indicates how close to grade level they are in each math domain. So this is sort of the slide that we're looking at now is sort of the summary of a random student's math report. And this would be the summary that a parent would receive at the end of the school year. As you can see on the left there, there are three different tests. The first one to the far left is the beginning-of-year assessment, which happens in September. In the middle is the middle-of-year assessment in January, and then the end-of-year in June. And it's kind of a nice visual there to reflect how much progress each student made. It's a nationally-normed assessment, so you're able to see, you know, where your child would be relative to other students who take this assessment. And then if we go to the next slide, you'll see a little bit more detail about each domain and what kind of skills and competencies are addressed in that domain.
Hey, Brian? Brian?
Yeah, go ahead.
Could you maybe just go back one slide? I think we just had a question.
Sure.
But I don't wanna, do you wanna do, I'm sorry. I didn't know if you were waiting for questions at the end.
Well, is it okay to go through it just in case they get an answer?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It could be.
I was going rogue.
I don't wanna tell you what to do.
I'll wait.
I'm okay with the rogue.
But.
Going rogue.
All right, keep going?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Brian.
All right, we're gonna hold off? Okay. So anyway, this, yeah, so this next page has just a bit more detail about what each of these domains entail. So that, you know, if you wanted to try to work on a domain with your child, a skill that was an area for growth for her, then you could. So that's what that is. And then if we go to the next slide, of the three reports that we're sending home, this is definitely my favorite. This is the DIBELS report. So this is the basic early literacy skills screener that we use. And as you can see, again, this first page is a summary of where students are at, just like the math assessment. We give this assessment three times each year, and each time we give it, parents get this report. This is not a computer-based assessment, so a student, each student takes this with an adult facilitating some brief reading and speaking exercises. And then on the next page, the part that I really like about the report is they give some suggestions of like ways that you can practice different skills that your child might need help with at home. So, you know, for example, here, like letters to friends and encourage your child to write notes and letters to relatives and friends. You know, pretty, pretty basic, but it is tailored specifically to what your child might need more practice with. So I think that's kind of nice and helpful to have some specific suggestions for parents who, you know, want to try to do some practice at home but aren't sure where to start. This can be a great, great starting point. And then lastly, if we go to the next slide, again, this is our iReady assessment that our third and fourth graders take three times a year. This is a reading assessment, but it specifically looks at reading comprehension as opposed to the more foundational literacy skills that we test with DIBELS. And again, this is just for third and fourth graders, so not our K to two students. And then again, on the next slide, you can get kind of a bit more information about what's addressed in each domain if you want to try to do some practice with your child. These suggestions aren't as specific. It's just kind of more information and detail. It's a little more educator-centric than the previous report, but I think still, still helpful information if you're trying to practice with your child at home or want to have more information about what specific area they might need more practicing. And those are the reports, so I'll pass it over to Val, and then we can start with that question about the first report.
All right, thanks, Brian. So this last slide here that we wanted to share was just the communication timeline for all of these things that were mentioned, the report cards and the data reports. So as, as you know, in October, we sent home the beginning-of-year DIBELS data reports to families along with a letter explaining the early literacy screening. In November, families had an opportunity to meet with teachers for conferences and to follow up on those screening letters. This January, we'll be sending, the principals will be sending home a letter to families explaining the report card updates that we just shared with you tonight. So we have a letter put together for that to explain what they'll be seeing in those reports, along with, I think Brian or T.J. mentioned earlier, the parent roadmaps from DESI, which gives grade level expectations. So, so you know, because the standard language can be very jargony, and so it gives you kind of explicitly like a kindergartner would need to do this with support, or a first grader might need to do this. So it kind of gives that information on those reports. In February, report cards will be going home along with all three of those reports that Brian just shared with you. So we'll be sending home, sorry, two reports for K to two and three reports for grades three and four. And then we have another round of conferences with teachers in March. And then in June, families will be receiving the same three reports that you'll receive in February as well. So we really were working to kind of streamline and work toward consistency on what we're sending home across the elementary level this year. And I think the principals have done a nice job laying that out, so. I think that's all we have, right? Anything I missed, Brian or T.J. on that?
Yeah, no, that sounds good.
Thank you all. Is there a way that we could see Val, Brian, and?
Yeah, they can bring them back up.
Can you bring it back so we can see Val, Brian, and T.J. on our screen? And then we can open it up to questions here. We're done with our presentation. There you go. Yep, thanks. Thank you. Yep, Kevin has a question.
So when you look at, if you can bring up that slide that had the math screener, it was like a third or... Yeah, there we go. So you got, so you got three slides up there. My question was on the first one, the test that they take at the beginning of the school year. Is that measuring, so when you have that top color, I assume that means on grading level, on grading, or math at grade level?
Yep, the green.
If they're in that top shade. So.
Yep.
I'm colorblind, sorry, so.
Oh, I'm, yeah.
Yeah, that's the top.
So on the test you take, so on the test you take in September, if you're in that zone, does that mean you're at grade level like that you would be at the end of that year? Meaning that, so for example, if you took that test in September and you're in that, and you're in that top zone, does that mean you've achieved your grade level for that, like where you'd be then? You should be in June of the following year?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So, so there's, yeah, there's a range of grade level expectations. I feel like this is always so hard to explain. There's like an early-on grade level, so they are showing a lot of the skills you would expect for a third grader early on in the year if they're early-on grade level, and then you have middle grade level and then like on or above grade level. So that would be like exceeding grade level expectation. So that, that bar like Brian said at the beginning of the year would be where it would be expected for that grade of the year.
Okay, so like if a parent saw like this particular, like, you saw that you weren't at level, they shouldn't be that stressed out because it really is measuring where they should be at the end of that year, right?
That's right.
So it's that adaptive assessment, so it kind of goes up and down with what the, what the student is answering. Yeah.
Right, okay. A few of my questions.
But yeah, Kevin, it would, it would be expected to be below grade level at the beginning of third grade. That would be normal.
Yeah, that makes sense. So I think a few of my questions had to do with kind of communication to parents, like to make it kind of useful. So, yeah, I was wondering if we could think of some way to maybe make sure that's like there, right? Like when they, when they get this report, because otherwise, you know, we might get an onslaught of people that are stressed.
Yeah, similar to what we did when we sent home the DIBELS, we sent home a letter explaining that the information we'll send home a letter before these reports go home as well. And maybe a little. Or with the report. Did we send it with the report? I forget.
I think so.
Like I saw like on the DIBELS one, like it said like recommendations for like, oh, get a book that has this Lexile and wherever. I don't think, like, we might know what Lexiles are, like in the education world, but I don't know if the average parent would maybe know. So maybe break down like what that Lexile is and like how to look for that in the library for like the books.
Yeah, definitely.
Something like that, yeah.
And I think this year it worked out well. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the timing of the DIBELS letters going home coincided nicely with conferences, so teachers had that tie, that face-to-face time following the report getting sent home to just even talk more practical type, you know, supports at home or whatnot. Correct? That's how the timing.
Yeah, to your, to your point too, I think, you know, these data points are an important piece in a snapshot of how a child's progressing. What's equally important is talking with the classroom teacher and using this as a guide, as a conversation starter, for lack of a better phrase, to say, hey, you know, I saw this report. I kind of understand it. As Kara pointed out, and Val pointed out, we have conferences in the middle of March, and it does, to some extent, coincide with the distribution of this material. So like everything else, it provides an opportunity to kind of understand the progression of a student throughout an academic year. So, you know, this is one data point of many that teachers are gonna be able to provide in whether it be formative assessments, unit assessments in math and reading, along with these diagnostic tests, along with other data points, formative and summative, meaning like check-ins during the class, or, you know, a unit assessment of some sort that will help drive these conversations. It's just ways that we can provide more information to parents to help them understand how their children are progressing.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Yeah, staying on the same slide, just when I first saw it, I was confused as to what the bars meant and just reading the dates because just looking at it, to me, it seems like it makes sense that a kid would start off the school year under grade level, but it looks like they went up and then came down by June. Like there was, there was some level of like learning loss. Is that, is that what I'm seeing? Or is that, is this a not-standard graph?
So it's not that they're, oh, go ahead, Brian.
No, you go ahead, Val.
No, it wouldn't necessarily mean that there's, that there's a loss, that there wasn't as many gains there. So like the, the assessment is adaptive, and there's a range of grade level expectations. So like there, like, there would be like, so the numbers here are, oh, God, I can't see the number. Four, four forty-nine to five sixteen. Do you see that on the top of the green bar there?
Yep.
It says on grade level is four forty-nine to five sixteen, so that's the range for, this is a third-grade report, right? For third grade, and so they can range on that level. And then we have seen before where we're like, we've had a teacher reach out and be like, wow, this kid's had a really bad day. Can we reassess that? This particular report sample we have here, you wouldn't see that all the time. Jerry, most of the time you're seeing increases on both. We probably chose a poor example for this. But it happens. It does happen.
No, it's probably good to talk about something that is one-off, because somebody would have that sort of question. I think, and we've talked about this a couple of times, and it comes up, I, I think we get the point that it is adaptive. And I think that's probably the part that we should really communicate well to parents. Because I think just, if you're, I do, I love charts to get information across visually. It's appealing. It's easy to gather. But just by looking at this, like without having your expertise to literally talk to and walk through it, I would look at that and think that my, my kid did better in January and then was like falling off. Whereas I get that like maybe they weren't as up on whatever material was in January. You know, they still gained, but it just, you know, wasn't that, that same.
And just before the next question, I just wanted to point out to T.J. and Brian, I know you were on this call, and I think Val you were too, but you had, you had run a Zoom meeting for kindergarten parents, which I thought was a great effort following the first report, the first DIBELS report going home. They ran, you know, an optional Zoom for parents, just this is your first pass at getting this, and we just want to give a chance to walk through so there was no unnecessary panicking or anything. So I thought, I thought that was a nice effort by the team. I think you had a pretty good turnout, correct?
Yeah, I think it was a nice opportunity to be able to answer some questions and try, try to front-load information as much as possible so we can get out in front of, you know, someone being a little bit anxious and seeing a data point that they don't quite understand or are nervous because they're comparing, right, which as parents we all do. So it was, it was a great night. I agree with you, Stephen. When you talk about, you know, getting information out to parents and trying to be proactive, you know, that's one of the things that we're making a concerted effort on, is to get out letters, to get out information, you know, to put information in the hands of the teachers too, because a lot of times, parents are gonna get information. The first thing they're gonna do is probably reach out to the classroom teacher, say, hey, I got some support. Can you help me understand more? And so in our communication, we're really trying to be very thoughtful around providing very, you know, broken-down, layman-term type information for parents to help them understand this, as well as encouraging them when they meet with their classroom teachers in their conferences in the middle of March, that this will be a little bit of a jumping-off point if it's a conversation starter, to talk about how the kids are progressing.
I do agree that. I do recall sort of our conferences last year, and that's exactly what we talked about a lot of the DIBELS. But sort of your point about reaching out to the teacher is well-made, because that's really the person that was able to sort of digest this for us or help us digest it and be able to take it and understand what it meant for sort of our child.
And they know your student best. Right, yeah, so that's great. Kevin, sorry, I felt like I jumped in front. You had another question.
For the DIBELS slide, I know that when the DIBELS report came out this year, I think that one thing that was confusing about it was where, when it says accurate and fluent reading, I think like most parents can have an intuitive understanding of what that means. But then you look at decoding, and like, you know, your kid might have a really bad decoding score and a really good accurate and fluent reading score, or vice versa, right? And I think that even if, you know, you read this and you're reading through the report, I think that, like, okay, I'll be honest, I had no clue. So I was reading, so when I got my kid, I was like, what does this even mean? So of course, I call a third-grade teacher, and I'm like, what's going on? And I didn't even call my kid third, because I thought that'd be, I was gonna wait for conferences. So I called a random one I knew, and then she told me exactly what it was. And then I was like, yeah, no one knows that. No one knows that information. So I was wondering if like we could somehow communicate, like, because like, if your kid is like in the warning range for decoding, like, what, if you don't know what that means, you could read this.
What does it mean to decode?
Because I read it, and I was just like, what does that mean? What do I do? What does my kid do? And, and I know you said it has that information, like, you know, play matching games or whatever, but like, I still think that it helps to understand what it's actually saying.
So even going beyond the definition that DIBELS provides underneath the header.
Yeah, maybe it can have a Wakefield kind of like.
We were saying like layman's terms.
God, yeah. I think for communication, you just gotta like make it like really clear. Like even like the word adaptive, like you said, adaptive, I kind of know what that means, but I really don't know what that means. So like, we gotta make sure you know what it means.
And even make, and like, we can, we can definitely think about that in terms of the letter that, any accompanying documents with the information.
I know it's more work for you guys. It's just like, but I think it's something.
But it saves time in the long run if it's clear. Yeah.
Right, but even as we work to kind of make it quote-unquote understandable and accessible, there's still this space, and T.J. alluded to this, where parents are gonna, in their attempt to make meaning, right? And not only technically what it means, but what does it mean for my child? It's a different, it's a kind of a different level of conversation. It will require a conversation with the teacher, and the teacher will be able to let you know, I know your child. This is how they're progressing. I'm gonna help them progress, right? And so that in and of itself, like, as much as the meaning, the qualitative aspect of, I know your child. I can help your child. This is a snapshot in time, right? And so, so these, these data help us inform or shed light on conversations in different areas, but they're only prompts really for conversation. They're only prompts, right? They're not, it's not, you know, you asked a really important question to start off, which was, if I tested at grade level, does that mean, you know, I'm exceeding, you know? That's a moment in time, right? And so that is a moment in time, so, and it takes work every day in a grade level to continue to be quote-unquote on grade level. So I guess my advice or my, for anyone watching, is to support the principal's premise and as well as Kara's, and what we're saying is, when in doubt, ask, right? When in doubt, ask, and it's not, and it's welcomed, right? It helps us understand what you're curious about and understand how best to help your child. And if you were our teacher in another school like Kevin, you don't ask the third-grade teacher. I have another school. I'm glad you did that, Kevin, but, you know, you can, please feel free, feel free to ask us. We appreciate the conversation, so.
Yeah, I think I'm taking it like more of like what, because I'm just, I'm just re-reading how the family report comes out, where it does, it like breaks down what decoding means, and it, but you're talking about more of like, what does the score mean for my child in terms of?
Yeah, so like.
So we don't necessarily have to fix that part.
If you're like, decoding score was at a certain level, and then you read what decoding means, it's like, ooh, like, okay, so what? So when my, because I see my kid, like, you'll see your kid reading, and you're like, so you'll be like, okay, so what? What is the thing that they need to work on to get better?
Because that's the next level.
I think in the end, that's all it is.
But that's absolutely the next level of conversation. How can I help my child at home? What should we be working on, or what aren't we working on, or, you know? So you can go down a rabbit hole with this. So, but you're, but this is a standard response that often people have difficulty sharing because they don't want, it's hard to say, I don't know, even when the information is present. So, but I think it's what we would gently, thoughtfully suggest, just please ask.
And Doug, I really like that you used the word snapshot. I think it's important to keep in mind, like, each of these reports is just that. It is not the all-encompassing. It is not the all-encompassing assessment of your child. It's a snapshot of how they did on the DIBbles in five minutes of assessment with an adult and, you know, on the I-ready, longer than that. But, um, it's important to remember that it's just that. It's just one, one snapshot, one, one, um, one assessment. Yeah, and to use it as a jump-off point for conversation with a teacher if you do have questions or concerns is definitely the most, most important thing.
Go ahead, Pete.
I have a few questions. The first one is, can we get a sneak peek of what the actual new report card format will look like across the various grades? Because I think like, that's one of the main takeaways from this, is we're improving the report card by consolidating stuff, but we didn't get to see what the new report cards will look like.
Yeah, I can share that. Val, we can probably, I know we were working on translation that, oh, sorry, I'm talking about you. Go ahead.
Sorry.
What'd you say, Val?
Oh, go ahead, I was just answering your question here. I think Donna was, um, emailing us versions of the PDF.
We're trying to get them in Power School, and then we're working on translating them in Portuguese and Spanish as well. Uh, but yeah, we can definitely, they're not fully done yet. But yeah, the formatting's the same, it's just the language, the content within the format is updated.
Yeah, I think having a chance to see that would be helpful, because I, I must admit, as someone that, I look at this stuff all the time, and I get the report card and I literally look at it for three seconds and I'm like, this is just too much. And I'm like, okay, it goes to the jar.
And we can even match up the, what it was versus what it, do you want everything at grade level?
I don't need to see what it was, I'm just more curious what it is. Yeah, what it, what it looks like now. And then the other question is one I've asked before, which is, are all of these things going to be available electronically now?
Yeah, so Power, Power School is the plan. Correct me if I'm wrong, TJ and Brian.
Yes, the, the plan is, the plan is, um, much like secondary to distribute report cards digitally. Uh, we're working on that. We are still looking at the family reports and, you know, sending those out digitally without getting down. Pete, I know you know a lot about this language more than I do when it talks about tech stuff, but, you know, being able to ascribe, uh, assign, um, you know, a student data point to a parent email, uh, there is some steps that need to go with that, so we're working with our tech department. That may, with, you know, that may be for this year, paper-based, like we did with DIBbles in the beginning of the year. Uh, but we are looking to send report cards home digitally this year at the elementary level and then working with the tech department on how we can share these family documents digitally as well.
Okay, we did, we did have some presentations on this topic earlier. And I'll just advocate again wherever possible, let's try to move away from the paper ones, especially as the kids get older, the stuff literally gets lost in their backpack and sometimes doesn't even get seen.
Yeah.
Um, and then the, I think I had one more comment, I don't remember what it was, but I, maybe I'll think about it some minutes later, it's another question. Oh, I know what it's going to be. So, yes, I mean, these are tests in time, but so is the MCAS, right? And, and one of the things we talked about before, which I think is worth reiterating, is the nice thing about I-ready is it should correlate pretty well to what your kid, you know, assuming it's the same day, and I realize a kid could have had test brain and, you know, just answered a question wrong, it should correlate pretty well to what they would have seen if they were taking MCAS on that day, for example.
It should eliminate, we just don't want any, I think our goal in all of this is to just make sure that we're giving parents the information that they need, uh, we're making sure kids are getting what they need in school, that there's no surprises in school, outside of school, and that we're, we're, we're trying to get in front of things as early as we can. So yeah, nothing's perfect, but I think these kinds of things keep us on the right track.
And the nice thing gives you an opportunity to see how your kid is, would do unlike an MCAS test prior to taking the MCAS test.
Definitely.
Does it have suggestions for like kids that are like already surpassing? Uh, like they've already hit their mark, they're, they're. Well, we don't have like a gift-to-the-challenged program, so like, like some, you know, like, is there something, is there suggestions? Like, there's suggestions for kids to work on? Are there suggestions in there for kids that are already like hitting their thing, like saying, yeah?
There, there, but I feel like it taps out, right? So there's like a top tier, and you would get the top-tier answer.
Go ahead, Val or Brian, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, I believe so, right, Val? Uh, there are recommendations from students regardless of if they, if they've exceeded the grade level expectation.
Brian kind of said it earlier too, like, the, the suggestions on those reports are kind of like generic suggestions based on the level that they're at. So like, if your child scores at a higher level, they're, the suggestions are going to align with what they scored with. Um, and in addition, I know, um, we internally in our district have put together a lot of resources for enrichment and intervention, um, that teachers are using to pull from too. So like, if there's something more specific needed, I think we've said this like a couple of times long here, just reach out to the teacher if you don't feel like the suggestions on there are meeting their needs, right? And they can, they can provide, um, the other suggestions that we have internally. We're working on ways to, um, better, uh, inform families about our curriculum resources. That's been a topic of conversation, and I know, um, like Kara said earlier, we did the DIBbles meeting for the kindergarten families. I actually have, um, monthly meetings with the reading specialist, and we're in the works of doing another round where we open it to not just kindergarten families, but to all families, because everybody's getting the reports, right? So we are working on other opportunities to inform. Um, and Jeff Weiner also has offered, if we record those, to put them on the website. So we are working on like, rather than if we can't get, like, if people can't make it to a Zoom meeting, they could still have an opportunity to get the information. So we're working on other ways to, to share beyond that as well.
Yeah, the website is a work in progress, but what our goal is to have a central hub that if, if parents had any questions around curriculum, grade level by grade level, subject area by subject area, it could be a place to house resources like Val said, but it's still a work in progress. But that's our goal, to have one central hub to direct people to.
Awesome.
Kara, can you go to the next slide? So we're back to this view again. So where is the middle data point? Where was the January? Because if, if you take this student, for example, they were approaching in September and still approaching in June. If I was a parent, I'd be like, for number and operations, what, what did we miss? Why is the student hundred-and-eighty days later, however, still approaching?
Oh, you mean why do they not have a, it goes September to June on the right-hand side? Yeah.
So there's no, so when the, when the report cards go, will they have that middle data point? Does that make sense? Like, you're showing me the beginning and the end as a parent, and I'm like, well, my student's still struggling and there's one area that we saw, we may have saw at the middle, I don't know.
Right, yeah, I, I couldn't.
Oh, I see what you're saying, on the sidebar.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it.
I, it would be to say, it would, would need to know the student and kind of what was going on. Yeah, I'm not sure why it's formatted like that, just the beginning of year and.
So your middle of year one will have the beginning and middle.
Yeah.
I'm not sure why they take it, that could be a formatting thing with I-ready. So we could get you that information, like, at the end of the year, if you, like, somebody had misplaced the middle of your report, for example, but the report you get in, in February will show the January data, and it'll have the two bars. It'll have the beginning of year and middle of year. And in that side column with that you're referencing there, it'll have the beginning of year and middle of year numbers right now. So you'll see like, like in numbers and operations, this one was approaching grade three, still approaching grade three, right?
Right.
Whereas algebra, it was approaching grade three and then at grade three. So you'll see that breakdown for both assessments in the middle of year. At the end of the year, they show the beginning and end. I'm not, I'd have to look as to why they do that, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I would just be concerned as a parent, like, well, jeez, it's been a whole year and they're still in the same, for that one category, where you could have, that student could have had a pull-out.
Yeah.
And that, though, if maybe that student increased in that category, could have helped them increase it, because math is all related.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, I just was curious where the middle is.
Yeah, and that would be a flag, if there was zero movement in progress throughout the year, then we would want to, you know, talk, have that, have those conversations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's where you definitely want more information from additional assessments, right? Like their unit assessments or their formative assessments that TJ mentioned earlier, because that category of numbers and operations encompasses so many standards that like it could be, obviously if they didn't make progress, there's a concern there still. There could be areas within that where they did make progress and it's just not giving that breakdown standard by standard there.
Okay.
Yeah, it could be like, you know, in third grade, maybe that they're like just not quite grasping fractions yet, and they're kind of stuck on that topic, and that could be holding them back or, or something like that.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Oh, yep.
Um, you said that there were going to be a different number of reports for kids by grade. I think you said two reports for like kindergarten first, or, and then, uh, three reports for third and fourth. Um, I was just wondering when those reports would be given out. So I assume for the three reports, like, if you go to that slide with the timeline, like, I assume the three reports would be the beginning of year, middle of year, and end of year? Or am I incorrect in that guess?
Sorry, I missed, so I, I think I didn't say that clearly. So the, when I said three reports, I meant like third and fourth graders will get an I-ready math, an I-ready reading, and a DIBbles. Um, a K to two will get I-ready math and DIBbles. Everybody gets them three times.
The October, February, and June.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when would, okay, I thought these were reports being, uh, given like to parents. So, okay, so I guess my question is.
They are, these are, oh.
They're, okay.
Yeah.
Because we didn't do I-ready at beginning of year, we only did DIBbles at the beginning of this year. So we were working on streamlining the elementary communication. So next year, you could expect to get all three.
Got it.
Like, this is, we just kind of eased in this year as we were trying to figure out if we could send them electronically, how to at best explain them to families to like answer the questions you guys were all talking about earlier, about like making sure they understand what it means when they get an adaptive assessment or what an adaptive assessment means. So like, that type of stuff, we've been trying to figure out how to, um, make sure we're communicating clearly at a rate um, that is manageable, does that make sense? So that, so the first report at the beginning of the year, everybody just got DIBbles. Now, everybody will get both DIBbles and I-ready and same at the end of the year.
Okay, so every parent, so every parent in the District of Wakefield this February is going to be receiving, along with the new report card, they will be receiving their student's I-ready test that they took in the middle of the year.
The report for the.
The report for it, not the.
Yep.
Okay.
And you'll see the beginning of year, oh, sorry, go ahead, Brian.
As well as the DIBbles report.
Okay.
Yeah, this is.
And you'll be able to see the beginning of your I-ready data on your I-ready report when you get the middle of year. So you'll see the beginning of year and then the growth to the middle of year as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is all progress. The curriculum team's done an amazing job, principals, I mean, the training, trainings happened over the summer. Um, you know, kind of coming to agreement, getting the training done, figuring out the communication. I-ready's been around, but haven't sent the information home to parents. So it's been a lot of like behind-the-scenes work and now, um, kind of just, this is the plan moving forward. And, you know, that, that parents can expect. Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much. Next on the agenda, we welcome Meg Webb. Meg, if you want to come up to the table. Um, just a little background, uh, before Meg starts to talk about absenteeism.
Oh, sorry, I should have been, sorry.
Just, so this, to state, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has made a concerted push to really highlight to schools the correlation between school attendance and achievement, right? If kids aren't in school, it's hard for them to kind of make the grade. It's hard for them to, to achieve at grade level, and, and it compounds itself. When students are behind in a given year, um, it can then lead to kind of future challenges if they're, if they're kind of missing time, um, in a, in a given year and it kind of, and they're not getting what they need to participate in their learning in the, kind of the next grade. And so there's been a tremendous amount of work at the state level about chronic absenteeism. The state has about a million students, um, and, um, post-COVID, our numbers are still looking at statewide, we're looking at almost one in four students, um, have a level of chronic absenteeism. And just to kind of level-set this conversation, the state defines chronic absenteeism as students that are missing 10% of the, of their enrolled time, or 10% of the school year. So in a hundred-and-eighty days, there's, chronic absenteeism would be, for example, a student that is missing 18 days of school, right? Um, and just, you know, to again, give a context, a quarter is 45 days, right? And so if you're, if you're missing 45 days, you're essentially missing half of a quarter, right? Or an eighth of a year. It's, it, it's quite a bit of time. And if you think about the gaps that come across all of the content areas, it's, it's quite difficult. And, and I asked Meg to come because chronic absenteeism is something that we're working on as a district. We've applied for and have received a small grant from the Department of Ed um, to support students that need intervention services or tutoring. Um, and, and also we're working to make sure that we're being creative and thoughtful about getting kids into school that need a level of support as well. And so, um, at Galvin, Meg and her team have been particularly creative and thoughtful about supporting students that are kind of trending in this, in this space or in this area. So, um, I just wanted Meg to be able to come and share, um, a little bit about the work at Galvin, but I also wanted to also share that this is something that we're working on across the district. And absentee or absences, um, is part of the accountability system as well. So schools award points and, and kind of when they rate schools in their report cards, making sure that we're getting students into school is an expectation that kind of is, is something that, that is a, I think, a goal for everybody. But I think it's something that we're making nice progress towards. So Meg, I can turn it over to you.
Good to see you all. Um, yeah, I was excited to come talk about this because we've been doing this work, um, for a couple of years pretty intensively at the Galvin, um, for reasons that you'll see, I think, in some data that I'll share. Um, and we have a whole team doing it, so principals are lucky. We get to kind of speak on behalf of a lot of work that's going on, um, beyond our offices for sure. Um, and I created this presentation with Carrie Melanson, who's one of our nurses and who was also, for a long time, been very passionate about this work, about making sure kids are in school. Um, so she has been a tremendous asset in our building, continues to be. Uh, so, this is high-tech, can you just push the middle?
Just there, yeah. The side, that, yep, yeah, yep.
Okay, so, um, I thought it might be helpful just to, to start with a national context. And it's fine that this is, it's kind of purposely overwhelming because it's just to see a trend. Um, because what this is, the blue dots are chronic absenteeism rates, uh, across the country for every single state uh, in 2018, 2019, so for all of our historic brains, that's the year before COVID. Um, and then the red dots are 2021, 2022, which for me, I always think of as the year we had masks but not, um, hybrid. So that could kind of contextualize it for you. Um, so we were taking attendance data, um, but we still had, um, things like the 10-day requirement to be out if you have COVID, the, all the, um, contact tracing, and if you were, had someone in your household, you had to stay home, all of those rules in place. Um, so generally, just to see that, that chronic absenteeism rates increased really significantly across the country um, during and, um, and after COVID, and the numbers you'll see in the, in the next slide, hold in a lot of places uh, in terms of not quite being able to get back to pre-pandemic rates of attendance. Um, so, um, this, oh, it's a little bit hard. It's easier to see on this slide back here to see, these are just particular districts that, um, show the progress of rates, again, 2018, 2019 being before COVID. 2019 to 2020, there really isn't data for, because that's the year that we shut down schools. And then 21 to 22, um, is again the year with all the, the hybrid business going on. Um, and then 22 to 23, uh, is our most recent year, if that make, that we have data for. So not this current school year, but last. Uh, and I just think it's interesting to see, um, how different districts have progressed over that time. I've worked in both, two of these districts, Boston and Montgomery County. Um, they're very different places, um, and it, when you think about kind of some of the context of these districts, it's interesting to think why some might continue to go up, um, why some have improved kind of in the most recent year, and what the story is behind that. I think with, uh, with absenteeism data, a lot of it is in the quality of what is measured. I think we're much more serious about measuring it now, and so sometimes when you see weird numbers, it might be, I'll show you a slide in a minute of our numbers that has a weird number in it, and I think it, there's an explanation for it.
I think it's, if I can add, Meg, I think it's important, the takeaway on the slide is we're still not back to pre-COVID numbers, right? There's still a, quite a delta, so.
Yeah, and Oakland and Montgomery County are interesting to me that, and I don't know if it's in how they measured it or, um, I just pulled this kind of as a very general look at, at some specific places. So some people wonder like, why is this a focus? Why does, why does the state worry about this so much? Um, and there's a tremendous amount of data linking, um, attendance to achievement. Um, and that's academic and then also just in, in creating social connections, social emotional health. And that's academic and then also just in, in creating social connections, social emotional health. So I pulled some of kind of the key data points that we, our attendance team thinks about when we're thinking about kind of the bigger picture of why, why we want to spend so much time and energy on this. I think for us, the, the point that by sixth grade chronic absence is proven, is a proven early warning sign for students at risk of dropping out of school. And then the ninth grade data being more significant than eighth grade test scores in terms of indicating graduation rates is really interesting to me. And I think what we realize is that when you encounter someone who's a really serious chronic absentee problem, there's so much going on kind of under the surface that we can build supports in for that it's no wonder that it's linked so closely to, to some of these broader achievement pieces. I think also interestingly, when we really, I think we all saw this in COVID, how much families rely on schools for so much. Whether it's meals, whether it's social emotional healthcare, physical healthcare, and not having consistent access to that is really problematic for students. This is a funny data point that I kind of pulled out. So at Galvin, when we were looking at our achievement data, we've got a spring 2022 data. It wasn't surprising that our chronic absenteeism rate was quite high. Everyone's was. But it was something we really wanted to address and tackle. I'd crossed out the 2021 data. They gave it to us. Desi gave it to us. But there really wasn't a reliable way to produce that sort of data. So I'm not actually, I'm sure they pulled it out of our student information system, but that was the year we had the hybrid. And then kids were like present on the screen or not. It was very difficult to, to get a rate out of. So you can almost, an outlier in a lot of ways. And students missed, depending what you mean by missed, they missed probably a lot more than nine days that year. But 2022 was a solid year of just every day in person at school. So that was again, the year that we had masks most of the year and all the 10-day requirement. And so that impacted those numbers for sure. And also the first year that we told people they should come versus telling them to please not come to the building. So a lot of, I think, kind of a 180 and messaging, which was challenging for a lot of, a lot of families to kind of cope with. We looked a little bit more deeply and I'm guessing, yes, this is a clear picture up here at our subgroups and who was more likely to be chronically absent at the Galvin. So this is specific to our school. And this is just interesting, I, I can share this with all of you so you can kind of dig a little deeper into it. But this helped us to tailor some of our interventions to think about which of our actual students at the actual Galvin were having the most trouble getting to school regularly. And there's a couple of real standout points there. I think that the African-American and Black student point was pretty jaw dropping when you look at it. And conversely, our EL and former EL data, they were some of the highest attendance rates, which is in keeping, I think, with national data. Even if you take COVID out of the picture, that, that group tends to have very high attendance rates. So interesting to look at and help us think about how to plan.
And just to be clear, students can be represented in multiple categories on this screen, just for reference.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to absorb that graph. It's, it's, okay, so just so I'm reading it correctly. The light blue is that they're, they're missing 10% or more of their school days. Dark blue is they're missing 20% or more of their school days.
Yes, and which is a good, in 2022, they gave us both of those data. The state gave us both because so many missed 10% or more that they were like, well, actually, let's see who missed 20% or more. They haven't before or since given us that, that data point. It's usually just the 10%, as Doug said, the 18 days or more.
And then the other number, number that accompanies it as the percentage on the, the right of the colored graph is the percent of student population that falls within that subgroup.
Correct.
So of EL and former, of our students that identify as EL and for, what is the rest of that?
And former EL.
Former EL. Okay, so out of the kids that identify in that subgroup, 11.1% of that subgroup population has been absent for 10% or more school days.
Yes, of that specific-
Right.
-part of our population.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah. I know a lot of this is overwhelming. It's more for distinct themes, but I'm going to answer more questions.
If we do this slide again, maybe put the number of students, because I don't know what, like 11% sounds like a big number, but it might be three students, which every student's important.
Yeah.
But a num, a natural number of students?
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah.
Yep. And as Doug said, some students are represented in more than one of the bars. High needs. I believe the definition is they fall into one or more of subgroups, English learners, special education and economically disadvantaged.
Correct.
Yeah.
And this, sorry, this may be on a future slide, but is there a, any differentiation made of students that are ill versus just don't show up at school?
So, so this is just like the cut and dry, like how many days, but that's a really good question because I think people get worried when we start to talk about, yeah, sometimes you're sick and you can't go to school. And it's not about saying that you should always, always, always be at school. We've actually gotten away from the like perfect attendance awards and all of that for a number of reasons. But it's more about like, how do we figure out who's really, really struggling and why to get here in a way that's going to impact their overall academic success over, over all the years in school?
So I think it's important to note, you ask a great question, Pete. It's important to note, if you've, if you've been around schools for a little while, there was quite a bit of time spent around talking about excused and unexcused absences. Because there were such issues with consistency by which absences were logged and kept track of in regard to what's, what's excused, what's not excused. If I excuse my child from, from school, is that excused? If I take them on vacation and excuse it, is it still excused? So what the Department of Ed has said is, we, we just want to level set this conversation, right? And, and their definition, an absence for any reason, right? So when we go, when we look at the list, so for example, when we share lists and when we discuss this, you know, I meet with the principals and I'll say, you have so many students that are out, can you tell me about them? So Meg sits and we sit across from one another. Meg says, yes, we have four kids that are out. We know they've been chronically ill or battling, you know, any number of, of issues. And we, we have a handle on, we know why they need to be out. So we feel like we have a handle on that particular case. But I don't want to steal your thunder for future slides.
No, it's perfect. I think the other thing, this slide in particular, 2022, that, that spring data, this, I'm not showing it as like, if this is where we are, this, this was the impetus for us to like take a lot of action in terms of how are we gonna, yeah, wholesale, get people back in the practice of coming to school regularly and then tackle some of these very specific subgroups and what might be going on there. And Amy's right, like one subgroup could be 11 kids, right? Like so the, the bars can be a little bit misleading in, in that way. But when we kind of figured out how we were going to do the work, we wanted to take into account what the story might be for different subsets of kids.
And maybe this goes to Stephen's question, like what, how many, when we say 10% or more, 20% or more, is that, that's 10% of the, sorry, I guess the number matters of the number of students because how many students-
In the subgroup?
Well, I'm, yeah. But I mean, my question is really, how many students at Galvin are chronically absent? Is it 50 students, 10? Oh, is it coming up?
Oh, how, so I was going back to this slide.
Oh, there it is.
Oh, you're asking, yes, so, so in this, this slide is everyone, just all together, like what, so in 2022, there were 13.5% of all of the students at Galvin were missing 10% or more of the school year. Which this is, I mean, before COVID, the 2019, spring of 2019 was 5.5%, so it was really significant.
So for some round math, if, and maybe I'll do my math wrong, but if we have 1,000 students, you're saying 135 are, are not coming to school 18 days or more.
That was 2022.
In 2022, yep.
In 23, it's, it's, you know, 88 or 80. And we're, we're trending down significantly. But I'm cutting Meg off.
No, you're not at all because I forgot to say that. So thank you. Yeah, the 2023 data was down to 8.8, just like you said.
So they do it by annual year? They don't do it by school year?
This is school year. So like, so 2022 means they, they cut the data June 20.
Oh, so it's the 21 to 22.
It's a little like brain teaser-y when you think of school data. That's why I always, I have to think like, we're a mess, we're hybrid, where are we at here? Because I have to think of school years that way because it is very confusing. So yeah, the 2023 data, which is the 8.8% data, which we'll dig into in a, in a second, represents last school year. And so this year's will be the 2024 data. All right, so this is super overwhelming. Don't worry. I just got, Doug knows I'm excited about this slide. So this is, we, we get a report card, which you all see every year, and then they break out each part of the report card for us. I actually think this is all public, but I'm certain nobody else is digging into it. And I only share this because this represents the change in numbers from that 2022 year that we were just talking about to last year. And it's significant because I think the work that we were able to do made a huge dent in, in the problem at the Galvin. And you see, I put the little arrows. The change, the negative is good. That's what you want to see because it means that we decreased the rate by a certain number. And then reason, just, we get a certain number of points based on how much you either meet or exceed the target that the state set for you, which is tricky because then you end up kind of shooting yourself in the foot. You do really well because it's hard. So in every category, we met or exceeded and a couple of categories below their target, but improved the numbers in any, any which way. So this was one of our, our strongest points in our accountability data. And to Doug's point, it is, it is a significant part of what gets weighed when you get ranked kind of as a, as a district and as a school.
Is, and the number of students that fall in that category?
Yes, yes, yes. And some might appear in more than one category. If you're quick and trying to add them up, it might not be exactly, exactly right. I think one of the areas where we spent, spent a lot of time was with our African-American and Black students. And that change of 20 points was like pretty, pretty great to see happen because it was really focused work on a subgroup of, of students and families. So I'll talk just briefly about how we went about doing this work. And it's not unique, it's not a unique set of strategies. We worked with attendance works and a couple of different kind of national organizations that do this work to, to figure out how we were going to approach it. But the first thing, and I, I thought this was really relevant because what you all spent a lot of time talking about is these foundational supports, how strong is tier one instruction? How strong is family and community engagement to all families feel welcome at the school? Are there translation services for students and families? Free meals is a really significant draw for a lot of families to regularly attend. And then transportation being reliable. So all of those pieces that all the teams across the district and you all work so hard on are, are important to just getting kids and families to be able to attend regularly.
And I, I just want to jump in, Meg, too, because I, I've just been witness to, I feel like you've led a lot of thoughtful conversations around just looking at the data internally and noticing and like really trying to get to the root of like who these kids are and what could be the stumbling blocks in getting them to school. So I just, I, I think, I appreciate that because I think that takes a lot of time, too, to not just look at the numbers, to really get to the, who are these kids and, and calling parents, bringing kids in, really just kind of figuring out what they need for support.
Yeah, one of the most fun things I think about attendance is it's like daily actionable. You, you know, and it can feel a little different because there's lots of ways, obviously, that you know how you're doing and how to do better. But attendance is just like living every day. And so in a weird way, it's kind of fun to just track it and to figure out how you can-
Just asking the right questions and noticing because I think that's, that's-
Yeah, and I think that brings us to like, one of the tier one strategies that we used was creating an attendance team that included administrators, but also counselors, our nurses, program directors. To just, we met monthly to review the data and to set targets and to make sure that we were staying true to the, the different strategies that we were hoping to implement. We did a lot of messaging. So if you were a parent at the Galvin at that time, you definitely knew this was a focus. We started with is the letter around the importance of attendance and what you would expect this year. We did a lot of messaging, get back to school night. We partnered with our PTO to make sure it was in their newsletters. And then our weekly family communication. We also have some typical things that most schools have. We get a phone call when your child's absent. You get weekly grade level reports. Families don't get those, but teachers get those just to see how each grade is doing in terms of attendance rates, which leads to some interesting discoveries about what drives attendance in some cases. And then we really tried to increase and continue to try to increase team-based recognition, acknowledgement of students. Again, not the, the perfect attendance type stuff, but just acknowledging students who are working really hard. For tier two, students who are trending towards chronic absenteeism got a little bit just more extra communication. It got, we, it was a little tricky for a while because we were saying, oh, well, the longer the year goes, the more likely you are to have like four absences, for example. So we had to change our parameter. And some families were really helpful with feedback about like, well, it's easy to be sick four times before December. Yeah, it is. You don't need this particular letter. We should, you know, adjust our language. So it was helpful to work with, with families around that. And what was most helpful is as we kind of identified the subset of families who were really struggling to get to schools, creating collaborative meetings. And our counselors really took the lead on that to help problem solve around what might be going on. And then I think tier three is kind of where now we're thinking, what can we, what more can we do? It's a small, small number that ends up in this category. But this is where we see a really, really significant, just lots of layers of issues going on. And we really want to be able to intervene in meaningful ways. And so we partner with STEAM Collaborative. We partner with Elliot Services and the Everett Family Resource Center. And we occasionally kind of go down the path of the courts with CRA or failure to send process. But I say occasionally because usually with lots of intervention, that, that kind of pathway can be avoided.
Can you share what a CRA is? I don't know that, that we know the acronym.
Oh, my gosh, I don't know that.
Child Requiring Assistance.
Yes, I did know that somewhere. I've used the acronym for so long.
It's like, it's like reporting with the court, like the juvenile court, like you need support. So you would file a CRA with the court.
Is that like an old CHINS protocol?
Yes, yes, yes. The old school CHINS protocol.
Child in Need.
I think very quickly, parents themselves will file the CRA and then we'll support in that process. And then occasionally a school will initiate that.
So, but, but it's not something that's taken up that commonly and that common. But one of the things that I think is important to note, and I know there might be questions at the end of Meg's presentation, but I can share, when I, I've been over at Galvin I, I get confronted often, and not confronted in a bad way, but in a very positive way, from the school nurse, Carrie Melanson, who will say, you need to hear what we're doing here for attendance. You need to know how well it's going. You need to know how we're getting kids in. And, and so it's something that, it's not a common conversation that is led by the nurse. But I, I love that the ownership is, and the work is taken up by so many because if it weren't, I don't know that you would be having the success that you're having. So-
Yeah, absolutely.
Kudos to you and your team.
Yeah, no, they're great. And actually Carrie and Andrew Sodren was emailing me because they knew I was coming here. We gotta get the team back together soon. We haven't sent this letter. And I was like, oh, gosh, okay. So no, they're, they're awesome and very passionate because it is so meaningful. And it is something that's so important to our students. So just some interesting things that we've learned in the process. And I think it's helpful when we think about kind of like the next phase of what we want to do, how we use this to help shape future strategies. But like I said before, chronic absenteeism, when we've, when we've identified it, is almost always a symptom of a bigger issue in a child's life. And so the helpful thing about using this data to identify who's really struggling to come to, come to school is that most often, we end up aligning them with other resources that help with whatever the root cause is. Because it's almost never just like, oh, I just don't come. There's, there's a lot going on. So it's been helpful in that regard. Personalized contact with families is more effective than blanket notification. So that tier one is helpful. And most people are like, okay, you got it, like moving on. And then the more, the next steps need to be more personalized. Our messaging needs to be supportive, collaborative, but also clear when it comes to roles and responsibilities of the school, the family, and the state. Because oftentimes we encounter families who don't realize we're legally obligated to follow up. If families are not sending their students to school, then it's part of what we're on the hook for in terms of our role in society, essentially. The group of students who approached 20%, absenteeism is very, very small with extremely high needs. And so it's helped us to figure out where our best partners are and who's really reliable and how we can help. Often in that category- Often in that category, it's beyond our resources. And so finding who in the greater Boston area is doing that work. And then interestingly enough, weeks before and after vacations and days with inclement weather have lowest attendance. I'm sure tomorrow will be a low data point because the weather looks terrible. But it's just funny quirky things you notice. In my previous school, we noticed oddly, kids would come to school in snow, but rain, they would not. So we bought a ton of umbrellas. I don't know if that actually helped, but it was fun. Because it was just interesting to see that. I was like, oh, the rain, really? And family attendance patterns or norms are often established by the start of middle school. So one of the things I've been talking to Doug and Kara about are like, how do we make sure, and I think that's the last slide, is how do we unify all of our messaging across the district? We do sometimes get families who say like, oh, I never knew this was a problem before. And so how do we start early in terms of messaging the importance? Thinking about a district-wide attendance team and bringing the work more broadly, something we've been talking about. And then aligning partnerships and services. So all things that I think could take this kind of work to a, to a next level for the students who really, really need that support. Yeah, any questions?
I'm curious about sort of the, how you initiate this, the work in terms of, you know, making sense from families that maybe do have like a sickness? Or if somebody, you know, scoots off to the ops for a week. But, and where is the handshake between sort of the teacher and administration? Because I assume the office, like you, you just have all of the data. It's, it's a number point. And then once something ticks up high, I assume, you know, that's what's a flag. But are you getting flagged prior to that from, from the educator? Can you talk about that sort of how you start off and where those relationships are?
Yeah, I think that's, at the middle school, we're lucky to have a team-based structure. So the team leader and the team are almost always the first to note, to know that something's going on. We might be able to flag like, oh, like this student's been out for X number of days, which they might not know that exact number, but like, yes, I knew that. And then they often have the relationship to kind of figure out what's going on or to already know what's going on. I'd say the guidance counselor also who works closely, we were so lucky to have on at each grade level, so we're closely with those team leaders. Often a lot of work has happened before anything gets to a more formal level. Certainly like a collaborative meeting or anything that you wouldn't just out of the blue have a collaborative meeting. Because there's probably a lot of informal communication that happened prior to that. I think it's, they're also invaluable, right? Because if you're looking at almost 1,100 data points, it's hard to, it's hard to know who had the flu and so missed a bunch of days. And who is this like becoming a recurring pattern for? You could sort of see that in the numbers, but the teacher teams are the best to give that information. And we have so many like multi-generational either students and teachers who are parents. And just people all know each other in a lot of interesting ways that we can sort of get behind just the numbers. So one thing we want to make sure people don't feel is that if your child is sick, like you gotta send them. Or there's still kind of the reasonable rationale, like you're the parent and you should be able to make those sort of decisions. When we're gonna, just want to support a little bit more is if that becomes a pattern, that's, that's going to potentially be disruptive to their success over time. And sometimes we do, we get into the meetings and we learn a lot of interesting information and maybe we can get a counselor in place or this or that support in place. And it really does help right the ship in a lot of ways. And then the very rare few cases get to that kind of like tier three level where we really need to look at some other interventions. Which ultimately again also end up being helpful to the family in the long run, even though the process can be difficult.
So I think to add to your, to add to Meg's answer, in order to your question about the middle school, the way the middle school is structured, it's like having, so the teams are like schools within schools, within the school, right? And so they have common planning times, the teachers meet together, the team leaders know, you know, the counselors know and the nurse knows. So between triangulating information between the teachers on team, the nurse, the administration, counselors, parents. So, you know, there's many opportunities to make sure that kids aren't falling through the cracks. It's, it's, it's a challenge every day to keep all of that data moving in the right direction. And sometimes it takes more time than we would like, but it works quite well. It works quite well. And kudos to the teachers for owning those relationships because it's not easy to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Meg? I know there's a program at the high school now, this new this year, that helps students who have been absent for a while come back to school and get.
The Bright Program?
What's it called?
The Bright Program?
Right. So, so in the middle school, the students who have missed a lot of work or days, is, did they just hop back in their team? Or is there any kind of like catch-up work? Did they get more time? What do we do for those students?
Yeah, so it's usually case by case. So the counselor and the house administrator and the team leader will figure out like, what's the best way? Is it, is it kind of like a gradual kind of re-entry into a full academic schedule? It really depends on what the circumstances are, what's best for that student. And we meet with the family too, to create a plan. So we create a shared plan. Because yes, after either chronic absenteeism or just a very long absence, it's very hard to just jump right back in. Socially is a whole nother dynamic too. We usually, we make sure we know who that child is friendly with and make sure that they're scheduled in the classes with, with those people. So they have those friendly faces.
It's a critical piece. The social piece is critical because the longer students are away, the harder it is for them to reconnect. Because it feels like groups coalesce or make new groups and move away. And so it's, making sure that kids are connected socially is really critical. Meg also works with Amy McLeod very closely. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of learning that's happening here that is growing our practice and improving what we do. So thank you for what you're doing.
Well, thank you. Thanks for having me.
Yes, thank you, Robert.
Thanks so much, Meg. Appreciate it. Next up, we welcome David Robinson, our Director of Guidance, who's joining us online. We provided to the committee the Program of Studies as well as a summary, a bulleted summary of the changes that we are making this year in the Program of Studies. We present the Program of Studies every year for your perusal and for your approval. So David, I could turn it over to you. You're up.
All right. So can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, great. Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight. Like Doug just mentioned, every year we go over the Program of Studies. Amy and I met with the department leaders last month. And we go one department at a time to hear what they have for proposed any changes for the following year. And that resulted in the program that we shared with you, the draft of the Program of Studies. And tonight I just want to take a few minutes to go over some of the new classes that we're proposing to add to next year's schedule. We don't have any really, any policy changes to propose. It's more of just adding some electives to what we currently already offer. So we have a number of new electives we'd like to add next year. We've added a lot just in the last, let's say, past year, two years, actually. We've had a significant amount of electives, which is something that's a goal we've had for a while. And they've turned out really well. We've had a lot of interest from students, which is always kind of the telltale whether it's going to work or not. And I think we've had a lot of good feedback from the students and teachers who teach the electives. So we're trying to build upon that each year. A lot of these electives are happier, so students have more flexibility and they have more to choose from, which I think has helped as far as the scheduling piece goes. So I'd like to go over a few departments that are adding some classes, proposing to. In the World Language Department, we still have the requirement for graduation where students have to take two years of a world language. Some students go on to take levels three and four of that language. But some students want to learn something different or addition to that. And so two classes that we're proposing to add next year, they're virtual high school classes. One is American Sign Language and the other one is Portuguese One. So a couple of things on virtual high school. It's obviously, it's, when it sounds, it's, it's online and it's, they're nationally certified teachers. The students in the class are from around the world. It's asynchronous. So students taking this class, they tend to be a little bit of a self-starter, self-disciplined, kind of keep track of their assignments. And then they would have a block during their day that they would have to work on this class. So that's, that's how the VHS piece works at the high school. And so specifically, I just want to read a little bit from the course descriptions on these because that would describe the course probably the best way possible. For American Sign Language, really excited to try this one. It says, "In order to demonstrate ability in, in signing signals, students will sometimes be asked to record videos of themselves signing and submit to their instructors. They'll work on production, comprehension, vocabulary and grammar to build skills in ASL." And also their course adheres to the world readiness standards for language learning. And ensures students develop competence to communicate effectively and interact with a cultural understanding of the deaf community. So like I said, this will be a VHS class and we're going to try offering that, see what we have for interest. And we're hoping that it's going to be a popular elective to choose. The other VHS is Portuguese One, so it's a little bit probably more self-explanatory, similar to our other languages that we offer at the first level. We don't currently offer Portuguese, so this way this will allow students to maybe delve into that language if they have that interest. So, so those are the two proposed changes to the World Language Program of Studies. And then I guess we just go through all of them and then you can ask questions.
I was going to ask the same thing.
Department or whatever.
Why don't we go through?
All right, why don't you go through the whole sheet and then we'll hold questions till the end.
Okay, that sounds good. So then the next department we have is Social Studies. They're proposing to add a few electives. The title's Political Science and Civic Action, Pop Culture History and the Post 9/11 World. And I'm not sure if you have the course descriptions already provided right there, summary. But basically the Political Science and Civic Action Class. For students interested in gaining a comprehensive understanding of how our government functions and the role of civic participation in a democratic society. The course will provide opportunities for students to investigate a nonpartisan student-led civics action project. And the project will help analyze complex issues, including social justice topics, consider differing points of view, make and support claims using valid evidence, engage in civil discussions with others and investigate contemporary issues that impact our school and community. So that's the Political Science and Civic Action Class. The History of Pop Culture, that one is going to examine the evolution of entertainment, media, fashion and societal trends that have shaped our collective identity. It offers a unique perspective, delving in how popular culture has both reflected and influenced historical moments. From the roaring twenties to the digital age, students will investigate the interplay between cultural phenomena and the broader historical context, gaining insights into societal forces that have driven change. And the last one there, the Post 9/11 World, to dive into a complex and multifaceted landscape of the post 9/11 world in this thought-provoking half-year history elective. This course explores the profound impact of the events of September 11th and their far-reaching consequences on global politics, society and culture. So three very, I thought, really interesting classes to offer up. And as we go into the course selection phase, that's when students will have time to request their classes. And then we kind of go and see what those interests were and are, and then base the schedule off of that. Those are the, the social studies. I'll just finish up with the Health and Wellness and then we can answer any questions that you might have. The Health and Wellness Department, they're proposing a few changes, pretty exciting. Health Science and Sports Psychology. This course is designed to explore the connections between physical health, psychological well-being and athletic performance. Through a combination of theoretical study, practical applications and case studies, students will dive into the principles of health science and psychology as they relate to sports, exercise and overall well-being. This course aims to provide a comprehensive understanding of how the mind and body interact in the context of sports and physical activity. So that'll be a brand new course. The Leadership and Team Sports, so we offered team sports this year. The department would like to add the leadership aspect to this course. So to continue to have the sport being played that currently happened in that team sports course. But this will also focus on the leadership component of team sports. Part of the course will be spent in the classroom, analyzing different leadership approaches and skills. The skills will then be applied to the gym component of the course. The goal is to inspire you to have the knowledge, skills and confidence to become a lifetime participant and advocate of physical fitness. So that is kind of an addition to the team sports that already exists. And then the last piece is this year, again, we added some electives, yoga and mindfulness. And it was a very big success. And so students have expressed interest in that class and continue to develop their, their ability and their skills in that. So we also will have students who want to start from scratch. So they're proposing to add a yoga and mindfulness two class. So for students who took it this year, wanted to develop it more, but then still continue to offer the one level for students who have not tried it yet. And then the exact same thing with strength and conditioning. We have that offered this year and students, same reasons, they'd like to kind of develop that skill in more depth at a higher level. And then, so they'd like to offer that two level, but also keep the strength and conditioning one class as well. So again, we've added some of those electives and we've had a lot of success with many of these across the departments. And that's kind of a sign right there showing how that has, that has happened. So those are really the only new classes that we're, we are proposing, which would be really great to get going. I'm sure you have some questions and happy to answer any of them right now.
Happy.
I had a comment and some questions. So my comment is it's just amazing seeing how many options are available for, for students to choose from. And then my question is, are there some courses that don't end up happening if there aren't enough students that want that class? It just doesn't end up getting offered in the, in the year? Is that what happens?
Yes, that's correct. So the next step would be to, next month or so, we'll have our course selection period. And then tally, it's all entered into the, into our school. So we'll get a tally of all the requests that have been made. We just take a look at the spreadsheet, go through the numbers, kind of flag any numbers that seem low. And if there are some that just aren't getting the interest, then, then yeah, there might be a decision to not run them. Most things we've offered so far have been enough to run the course. But yes, we definitely look into that. So if there's very, very little interest in any of these subjects, then the decision might be to not run it.
Okay, and then my last comment is there, there seems to be a course that must, we lost our lights again. There seems to have been a course that was eliminated at some point. If you go to slide 15, Shakespeare has a cross-through, but it doesn't appear, like it seems like it probably should have been removed.
Yep, that was, to your first question, that's exactly what that was, was for the past two years, we've offered it. And then the requests just haven't kind of quite gotten up enough to justify to run the course with a local teacher. So, so that would be an example of yes, because of the, yeah, that's what that was.
Is there, is there a number, like six, eight, five, three? How do you know whether to run the course or not?
It's a good question. I think, I mean, you try to say maybe 10 is kind of a cutoff point, but I think it depends a little bit on, you know, like as far as if it's below 10, it's tough to probably run, I think. Ideally, you get more than that. So I think if you have those numbers, we kind of go back to students that may not have selected a full 100% of their schedule and just trying to see if any of those that are kind of on the bubble would get a few more students that might be interested in to kind of fully confidently implement the class. But if it's lower than that, we kind of go back to the drawing board. That's typically how we've done that.
Go ahead, Steve.
I'm curious, is this the first time we've gone with the virtual high school model or have we used them for other courses?
Yeah, so it's not the first time. We have had virtual high school. It's been promoted basically as just an option of, for students, maybe if they're having trouble fitting in a course, if they have interests that we don't offer at the school. So we've, we've offered it, but I think by putting those two in, the World Language Department thought that by adding those in specifically, instead of the hundreds of courses that VHS offers, it might kind of draw some interest into those. And not all students may exactly know all the courses that VHS offers. It's a pretty lengthy catalog. So by pulling these out, I think is to emphasize it more. But, but yeah, so we do have virtual high school already.
And maybe to, back to Amy's question, are you able to offer those courses with perhaps a lower student population? It seems like you could.
Definitely, because, yeah. Yeah, we have a couple of classes, we have one or two students taking it because they take it during like an ASC time where the teacher is somewhere else in the world and the students are in somewhere else in the world. So they just need to have that block of time during the day to, to get online and, and to work on the course. So those classes don't have to worry about that cap.
That's great. What do we do, just out of curiosity, in virtual height, like in classes like that, what do you do when, do, do they still have like an academic advisor to go to if they have questions in this?
So Dave, Beth Hughes, right? Is that?
What's that?
Oh, would you, would you jump in? Are you talking about like somebody onsite at Wakefield High that would oversee?
Yeah.
So Beth Hughes?
Yes. Yeah, so we have on Beth Hughes, whereas she takes on that VHS role, kind of being all VHS is Beth there. So she's great with it. Yeah, so we have on Beth Hughes, whereas she takes on that VHS role, kind of being all VHS is Beth there, so she's great with it. She's aware, she runs all the applications and keeps track of who's taking what, and lets us know. And kids go to her regularly with questions. But they do have someone assigned online in the course itself, but kind of like an in-house assistance.
So just as a context piece, virtual high school's been around for more than a decade, well, well before COVID. And what it did, what the, kind of the, the partnership that it creates at the school is, you know, it basically takes your program of studies and increases your program of studies by 600 classes. Right? And so, but the exchange is that what they, what ideally, you can either pay outright to participate in VHS, or you could pay a reduced rate if you have a teacher that's willing to teach a class through VHS. So if you have a teacher that's willing to teach a class, it's like an exchange, right? You get so many seats. And so it's, it's actually a very smart idea. And it's, you know, Beth Hughes has been doing this for a little while, and has been the VHS coordinator and is just really great at it. And so, but what it does is it allows us to take kind of these one-off classes. Or if we have a student transfer in from a different part of the world, a different part of the country, who says, I've already taken these classes, or they're looking to continue in year three or year four, it's a nice way to bridge that gap.
Great.
Hold on, I, I wanted to stay on this, because I'm curious too. So does Beth teach a, a VHS class?
She has in the past, I don't know if she did this past year. David, did Beth teach a class this past year?
Yeah, she has, it's a Hundred Ways to Write a Short Story, I believe she's, yes.
On VHS?
She's done, on VHS, yeah. She does creative writing as well, but that's, yes, that's.
So, so we sign up, four of us sign up for American Sign Language next year. It goes on our schedule, it's a block of time, and we go to an empty classroom or the learning comments? What, how do we take it? How, how does it work?
So it, it goes on the schedule, not assigned to a, a block. Basically, it just, it's not like a, it has a, there's no VHS classroom, basically. So the student knows that when they do have that block of their day, basically it's an ASC during their, their time there, that's when they would take the course. So it's, it's shown on their schedule, it's shown in the transcript and everything. It just, they tend, they take it in the classroom that they have the ASC in.
So could they, in theory, sign up for more than one VHS to get more credits?
Yes, some, most VHS classes are full year, but if they do have a half year, some students take one each semester. It's not to, it's meant to count as one of their already scheduled courses, not to kind of overload the schedule. I think in the past, some, some people have tried to do that a little bit for GPA reasons, things like that. But, so it's basically counted towards one of their classes. It would take, so instead of an elective in-house, you would take it to a, take a VHS class.
And are they generally?
Four people take the American Sign Language, they might all, all have the same block off, so they technically will just take it when they have their, their ASC.
And are they generally pre-recorded? It's not live person, or?
It's not live, no, it's, it's pre-recorded. It's not like a synchronous class, so yes, so there'll be recordings, and there's assignments and everything that they have a teacher that they connect with, but it's not live.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Pete, go ahead.
Your last question was one of my questions. My other question is, in terms of cost, Doug, so do we pay nothing for this, or do we, do we pay something based on?
We pay something.
Okay, but it's, it's minimal?
It's, it's, it's not minimal. And so it's, we, but we're paying less than we would if we didn't have someone teaching in partnership with VHS.
And then how many, how many students do we have taking VHS classes, just out of curiosity?
We have, we have approximately, we have seven each semester this year.
Oh, that's it?
This current year.
Okay.
Do you have anything, do you have any experience with this, Amma, VHS?
Oh, sorry.
No?
Oh, no, I wasn't going to take it myself one year, but certainly against it. I know people who take it, and they've talked positively about it.
It is positive experience, okay, thank you. Anyone else have questions or comments?
I would just sort of echo what Pete had said earlier on the, the sort of the breadth of, of courses that we're able to provide in district is awesome. And I like how it, you are, you will continually go back to the drawing board, both seeing sort of what's, what's culturally relevant, what might be of interest to the students, both in sort of a skill-based and also just even a socially-based. It's, it's great, so thank you.
Yeah, our department leaders and the teachers work really well together with coming up some of these, these ideas for classes. It's, it's very refreshing to see. I like seeing all these new electives that are offered every year, it's really nice to see.
I think we have a motion.
We do. Move that the school committee approve the Wakefield Memorial High School Program of Studies for 2024-25 as presented.
Second.
A motion's been made, and second, is there any discussion? No, all those in favor? Seeing none opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, David, appreciate it.
All right.
So my last, good night. So my last comment of the evening is just to let everybody know that we will again be inviting school committee members. And, and this year, we're going to add town council to this, to come and visit schools and classrooms. Right? And, and see, there's one thing to hear about it from our director of guidance, or from members who kind of come and visit. But there's another thing entirely to, to see kids in class and get a feel for what teaching and learning looks like. And, and it's one of the, I love doing this, because it's really great to see. Our teachers are doing great work, our kids never disappoint. Even when they're not their best selves, they're still, they still will disappoint. It's quite, it's quite good to see. And that's, that's it for me. I don't know if Ahmed has anything to say about adults visiting, you know?
Just don't ask any questions, right?
We, we certainly look forward to it, we certainly look forward to it.
I think it's a welcome surprise.
When, when is that going to be?
We haven't put dates on the calendar yet, but it's going to be in February.
That's right.
I can, I was just, I just sent myself a note, I can reach out, I'll get some possi, I'll get some possible options from each of the buildings and then send it out.
They're great, because to, to what you say, stuff that happens in this room, it's good to see it sort of in the building. I know very concretely, one of the tours that we did, we were able to see sort of the, the science cards in one of the elementary schools, which is directly, you know, as part of bringing the science back in the curriculum. And also seeing kids work through the, the like leveled math programming that, that we had talked about here, and then seeing in practice was great. So appreciate sort of making it work and, and teachers making the space and time.
Great. That's it for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I don't have any comments and updates. Do you have a negotiations update?
I don't, not since our last meeting. We are, the negotiations team is meeting with the Wakefield Education Association, Unit A, on Thursday. So, and we're just continuing to sort of try and put together a contract that works for everyone.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports, Finance and Facilities, Tom?
We haven't met since before the holidays. Trying to put together meetings, looking like maybe next Tuesday, seems like a popular date among the, among the, among the crew. And we're trying to probably, or I'm trying to initiate at least maybe three or four meetings to sort of blow out till March, start the timeframe. And, and February certainly, so we can have some meetings on, 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 on the calendar. Those meetings will also include some of our, our peers at the town finance committee as well, so.
Great.
They'll be invited in, and welcome to participate.
Thank you. Labor and Personnel, Stephen?
Teacher negotiations.
Thank you.
Ongoing.
Student Services, Eileen?
Yeah, we met December 13th, right before the holiday break. And we discussed kind of going forward, our next path for, our next steps for researching like other groups for school start times and everything. So we, we had Doug on the call just to kind of chat about like what our next steps would be, and, and who, you know, reached out to community members and everything like that. So we, I don't have anything on the books yet for our follow-up since we came back in the new year. So we'll definitely get that going and get started on some research.
You? Thank you. Policy and Communications, Kevin?
We have not met since our last full school committee meeting, so we'll be looking to schedule a meeting soon.
Great. Does anyone have any liaison reports?
Yes, for CPAC, we met yesterday where we were discussing the collaborating with your district event, which is going to take place, I believe it is Thursday?
Is it tomorrow?
Nope, wait, hold on.
Am I wrong?
Yes, you're right, it is tomorrow, Wednesday at 7:00 PM, and over Zoom. And it's, I, I mean, I listened to their planning of it, it's going to be amazing, like really, really helpful for parents who are, like, I'm still clueless sometimes when I go into an IEP meeting, and I've been into a few now. And so it's just really helpful, and they're going to have like, not like a cheat sheet, but like some tips, and some things that you can kind of come prepared with. I, I think it's fantastic, so I'm really, really excited for it.
It's great that it's on Zoom, I feel like that bumps the attendance.
Yes, super helpful, yeah, so everyone should attend, yeah.
Thank you. For the Sustainability Committee, they had actually a retreat this past Saturday, I was not there, it was a dance convention. So I'll get some notes from that and see, they were just brainstorming what initiatives they're going to be working on, so I'll bring some of those back and share with the committee. Any other liaison reports? I don't want to miss anyone, okay?
Youth Council's meeting tomorrow, so I'll check my day schedule, see if I can join them here, noonish, 11:45, I think. Yeah, well, tomorrow's the, tomorrow's the half-day, so.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay. Future dates, so our next school committee meeting is Tuesday, January 23rd, again at 7:00. Does anyone have any agenda items? Okay, I have one. I was wondering if we could maybe bring someone in from the Bridge program, see how that's going in the next couple of months?
Bridge or Bright?
It's Bridge.
I thought it was Bridge.
It was based on the Bright program.
Got it.
You told me it was Bridge an hour ago.
I think I said, okay, got it.
When did they come last, Amy? Because I'm, they?
No, they came to a subcommittee meeting.
That would be.
You're right, it was the subcommittee meeting.
At the beginning of the year. I was excited about Berman, I'm just wondering how it's going.
Yeah.
Great.
So, oh yes.
I know last spring, like near the end of the school year, when we talked about the seventh grade math, like the changes. I, I think we did plan on getting some feedback, I mean, it's January.
Yeah, we just actually talked about that last week. We were thinking, because right now the communication's going out, you know, things are, are getting going. So we were thinking if we did a spring.
Okay.
Touch base, just to, you know, here's here too, here's how, if that feels all right to you. We were, we were running different times, timelines last, earlier this week when we met.
Cool.
So May? Or do you want earlier than?
Oh, you can bring it every meeting.
So far so good this year, I feel like the communication's been pretty good and.
But I also want to see where it started and how it's grown, like the first class.
Yep.
Was it successful? Did we achieve our goals?
Yep.
Okay, so thank you. So yeah, April, May.
I think we're still waiting on hearing about the adjustment to the, like the honor roll at the.
Oh yeah, on the list.
So, yeah, this, we can talk more about that. I think I, I've had several conversations with MAGA about that, and, and one of the things that's clear is that they're, they're, they're working collectively to try to think thoughtfully about how to recognize kids for their effort and for their, for the achievement, not only for achievement, but for their effort as well. Right? And.
That it doesn't have to be in place of, it can be in addition to.
Yeah.
Still recognizing high achievement.
More to follow on this, but I think we've had some, some good conversations, and I, and, and I look forward to them coming back to talk more about that.
So maybe it's staying, or we just, it's still all?
So I think it, it could be part of, I, I don't want to steal their thunders for them to report, but I think it, it could be part, parcel of a larger group of ways to recognize the workforce.
Seems like there's a narrative there, and then, and then it's still sort of being construct, what's, what's going to happen to sort of recognize students in their different spaces. So, no, look forward to, you know, sort of when they want to bring that.
We're building anticipation for an upcoming meeting, it's the first for us.
Yeah. I like the thing.
We need to, hey, we have some students, we're going to get more students. There was no students here tonight, it was sad.
Is it the table?
No, I'm not, I'm not, yes, but he's at our table now. The past few meetings, we were spoiled, we had championship teams.
The little kids were awesome, the Galvin kids.
Yeah, like, no pressure winter sports, but we're waiting for you.
Is the gymnastics meet still going on? Maybe you can get a couple of.
I'll just pull, I'll pull my niece.
There was some shirtless wrestlers.
She's at the youth council, I think.
Is she?
Yeah.
Oh, she is.
Yeah.
Anyway, but we do have actually students coming next, next meeting. School Committee Comments?
It was to the, to the, the seventh grade math communication, sort of the advanced math communication that went on. I was, I was noticing, so it didn't feel like it, a communication went out in a flyer that said, if your kid is interested in advanced math, fill this out. But it didn't seem, and, and I think the date to do that by, in that flyer is January 17th. So if you're interested, you should sign your student up. Did, I know we had talked about there was, there was going to be assessments done, or there are assessments done in the earlier part of seventh grade, and then a communication would go out to the parents. Are those two separate things? Was a direct communication sent to parents for students that would be sort of, you know, identified as students that should be in this program? And so they were communicated with directly, and then on top of that, was the one that's in them?
I don't want to misspeak, but I, I, I was speaking last week with the curriculum coordinators, and I know we talked about not just having it be a one-and-done, like, oh, here, here's this opportunity, hope you find it. Like, just really like tracking, you know, making sure that kids know, like, that they would be a good fit for this class, talking to students, talking to parents, and then not just relying on email correspondence, maybe putting a phone call if you don't hear back, and a student that you thought would be a good fit doesn't follow up. So I know that they're thinking about that, but I don't want to give you misinformation on the specifics of how it was done. I could ask.
Because it seemed like, so we talked about it as being, what we were trying to do was get to the data to identify students that should be in the program, and then make sure that sort of we got them in the program. And then what it, what I saw was a flyer, which was just like, you should sign your kid up if they're interested. Which seemed a little bit, right? And if I'm, just as someone who gets that email, that's what I, that's what I took from that. So I just wanted to see if it was, are there, were there two communications, or was it just the one that I saw? In which case, it doesn't seem exactly like what we were discussing.
Right, I think that they're looking to expand the, you know, I think they're looking to expand the offering, right? And so I think we can, we can talk more about the specifics.
But what beyond the, the Galvin family newsletter went out, is what you're looking for?
Yes.
Like, just kind of, yeah.
Yeah, because I think my, my assumption, and someone else can correct me if I'm wrong, but that a, a communication would go out to the family of said student, because assessments were done, and.
The parent should be notified that.
I think so far that communication's gone out, but I think there'll be more to follow. I think we, we can provide more information at our next meeting, because I too don't want to misspeak about.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, Stephen might.
With the date coming up to be January 17th, if there were going to be family communications, I would assume it would have to be before that date that was identified in that email.
Right, so, so if there is an inquiry part of this, which I believe there is, right? It's, it's, do you have an interest, that's an inquiry.
Yeah.
Right, it's not, you know, yes, I've assessed your child, yes, they've qualified, yes, I'm sending you only you this note because they're qualified. I think that there's, that's not it, right? And so I think that there's more to it.
Okay.
Right, so what I'm saying is, I think that they're two separate, right? I think one is to gauge interest, right?
Yeah.
And, and I think that that's a starting point.
And I think sometimes the newsletter is lighter on information, because it might just want to bring things back to people's attention that might have been communicated at the grade level, you know, the broad, so I'll follow up on that, just to know exactly what's there.
So is, this is for the students who would soon be starting it this year, or for students for next year?
It would be the, the last third of the school year, they would be eligible to start advanced math in seventh grade.
Okay, because I remember last year with my students in seventh grade, the teacher definitely went to students who felt, they felt like they should be doing this, and if they didn't sign up for it, they encouraged them to, to do it and follow it up. So I don't know, like, that's, like, I think that happens, even if it's not in the, like, I think as you were saying, it's kind of like, here's the interest, to gauge some interest, and then there's follow-up that happens, if there's students that really belong in this, for sure, and aren't signing up. to gauge some interest, and then there's follow up that happens if there's students that really belong in this, for sure, and aren't signing up for it.
Okay, that'd be good to know. Thank you.
Certainly.
January twenty fifth is opening night for Legally Blonde. So if you haven't gotten your tickets yet, please do. January twenty fifth, twenty sixth, twenty seventh, seven PM shows, and twenty eighth is at two.
Yes, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday matinee.
Sunday matinee.
I've heard it's gonna be a big show.
Can I say?
Really big show.
It's gonna be epic.
Channeling your best.
Is there a dog?
No.
I don't think so.
There's not a live dog.
Yeah.
We need to get Will on. Oh, Will's not doing this one. We need to get Elton on and ask if there'll be a dog. I know it worked so well for Annie, I just wasn't sure.
Any other comments? No? Okay, do you have a motion? Oh, Ahmad, do you have any comments? I'm sorry, thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah.
No comment?
No comment, thank you.
All right, do you have a motion?
I do. Move that the school committee adjourn the meeting of Tuesday, January ninth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor? Passed unanimously. Thank you.